I'd like to call to order at 7:00 PM the board meeting in the meeting room of Stanley Williams Community Center on Thursday, November 16th, 2017. Roll call please.
Acting Chairman Corchell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bumbek?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio?
Here.
Shawna Papaholser?
Here.
Would you join me in a salute to the flag? Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask that you join us in a moment of silence for longtime North Bramford educator Alan Davis and longtime school community member Altek Sarah. The organizational meeting of the Board of Education takes place, the first meeting of November succeeding each biennial election. The first order of business will be the election of officers for chair, vice chair, and secretary. And we will now accept nominations from board members for the office of the board chair. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, is there any discussion? All right, we can have the clerk cast a vote for the chair. Thank you. We will now accept nominations from board members for the office of board vice chair.
Nominate Shawna Papaholser.
Second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, we close nominations. I ask that the clerks cast a vote for Shawna. We will now accept nominations from board members for the office of board secretary.
Nominate Sienna.
Second? Any other nominations? No other nominations. Hearing none, I ask that the clerk cast a vote for Beth Sienna as secretary. Now we're going to discuss committee assignments and appointments to these committees. And Scott and Don have provided us with information with write-ups on each of these. We can start with ACES. It's on page, actually it's exhibit A of your board packet. And I would like to keep ACES if I could. If that's okay with you? Is that okay? All right. Under building committee, Diane Bumbek was our former building committee representative, but she's expressed interest in a change. And Beth Sienna has expressed interest in going on the building committee. So we'll put Beth on the building committee. Pension. I'd like pension. As a new person, I was given ACES in pension, and at first I was wondering, you know, exactly what I had gotten myself into. But I'm enjoying pension, so it's okay with the board. I would volunteer to stay there at the town committee or town council will appoint me in a election.
You're actually an ex officio member on every committee.
Okay.
Yeah, so you can be on every level.
Still, I think the town council has to.
Yeah, they have to appoint on this.
Town council has to appoint.
Right, for the rest of them, I guess.
If somebody else will not, said I am willing to give it up.
I think they're gonna support you.
All right, so, and then will be, is there anyone else that would like to be the alternate for pension? If not, we can always save that for the new person that will be getting.
It meets during the day.
It meets during the day, usually only four times a year though, and it's usually, meets during the day at 4:00 PM, usually on a Wednesday. And Don and I are usually there. So if anyone wants to be an alternate, speak now, or we'll just save it for the new person. I think we're saving it. Okay. Negotiations. Marcy has expressed interest in staying on negotiations. Shawna would like to join her. I'm also interested unless someone else wants to, because I can be the ex officio. Okay, so negotiations then will be Marcy, Shawna, and Sarah. Budget and operations committee. Diane Bumbek has expressed interest in staying on budget and operations. So has Marcy. And Shawna would like to join them. So the budget committee will be Marcy, Shawna, and Diane. I thank them. Curriculum and instruction, strategic planning. Diane Bumbek has expressed interest in staying on curriculum instruction and strategic planning. And Beth and Carolyn would like to join Diane on her committee. Under the policy committee. Beth and I have currently been on it. I can step off if the new person would like to be on policy, because I can always visit anyway. And Diane has agreed to join policy with the understanding that she may not always be able to make meetings, but we can certainly forward her things and get her input. Or, okay. Communication committee. That was Marcy. Do you want to stay on it?
No, it's fine.
Okay. Carolyn, would you like to be on communication with me?
Yes, please.
Anyone else want to be on communication? All right, so Carolyn and I will do communication committee. Transportation, bus safety. This was Marcy as far as I could see. I don't know if there were other members, maybe Debbie Premier used to be.
I think Debbie was the alternate at one point, but if I'm not mistaken, we kind of did away with this committee and we made it sort of an ad hoc committee, because we hadn't met, there wasn't reason to meet, in a number of years. And we sort of did away with it and made it an ad hoc. So whatever you want to do.
And calendar is similar, because it's probably only gonna be once now on the common calendar.
Okay, so why don't we, Marcy, do you mind staying on transportation and bus safety?
If nobody else wants to do it, I'll stay.
I could firmly say I do not want to be on that.
Motion.
I said I do not want, no.
No, she does not.
I do not want to be on that. All right, and then under calendar, do we have a volunteer for calendar? It's probably only one, did you say you'd like?
Not the other.
Carolyn will be calendar. And then the wellness committee, I believe was Colby O'Rourke. Anyone with an interest in wellness?
That one I used to do when Colby took over for me. That's like 2:00 in the afternoon. 2:25 now, 2:30.
Okay, I mean, I'm free during that time, so I couldn't.
I enjoy it, but it was just a sound.
It's not a good time, because you're stuck in some buses and.
Right.
Okay. A volunteer for wellness, that's. And on the sheets Don gave me, there was long-term planning, but on the, here we don't have long-term planning, so I don't know. Diane and Marcy were on long-term planning, I'm not really certain that does.
That was the one that was more driven by the town council, wasn't it, I think?
Yes. Oh, I don't, okay.
Yes.
All right, so we don't need to worry about that right now?
No. Yeah, I could go off that.
Okay. All right, well, actually I'd.
I think if it re-ignites, then maybe you should.
We can talk about it. We can talk about it at the board meeting and appoint people. So I guess we are okay done with committees and we thank everyone. Does anyone feel shortchanged and like they want to be on another committee? All right. With that said, I believe I have to close the organizational meeting and then we will resume. No, I guess we don't. We will move on now to visitors and press, but before we do that, I just want to say how delighted I am to see so many people at our board meeting tonight. And I'm hoping that you remember in December, in January, et cetera, that we're here once a month, and we love to have people from town, students in the schools, come and hear what's going on and comment. But before we get to our public comments on the agenda, I'd like to say two things. And the first is that I've been made aware that there have been a lot of Facebook posts spreading some misinformation out there. And I'd like to say briefly that the board has no intention of voting to fire or non-renew superintendent. We are looking into whether or not to extend an existing contract for all three central office administrators who have contracts that expire right now in June of 2019. So that is what we are doing. We are not looking to non-renew or fire people. And I just want to say that because I've had so many texts, and I know people on the board have so many texts to that. And secondly, before we get into public comment, this board has ground rules for this. And the board, and I'll remind myself, may not respond to public comments or questions. And I ask that you respect that. And the rationale for that is in the freedom of information law, because if we were to start entertaining questions and comments during public comment, we would be violating open meeting rules where you have to post notify. People from home might want to be in on those discussions. So please respect that while you're free to comment, and we are not free to respond. Secondly, our current policy, which we're looking to change, limits you to two minutes. We're looking to change it to three, because we think two minutes is really short, but for now, we have to follow the bylaws. And there will be no personal attacks on school staff, administration, or the board. And I know that you'll all be respectful when you speak. So if you take turns and please move to the microphone, clearly state your name and address for the record. We can proceed.
Brandy Little, Old Turnpike Road in Northford. I'm talking about superintendent's extending his contract another year to make it a total of three years. The first three years of my daughter's schooling, she is now a senior, when she was in kindergarten, first and second, I couldn't tell you who the superintendent was. I couldn't even tell you what he looked like. Never was visible, never was around. So Dr. Wolf ended up retiring, and the Board of Ed ended up hiring a committee to talk to parents about what they were looking for in a superintendent. So I went to that, and I said I wanted a visible superintendent. I think they took it literally. What are you, 10-10? 10-9? But anyway. I wanted a superintendent that was visible, that was involved not only academically, because obviously that is the most important, but I wanted a superintendent that was going to be at concerts, band concerts, athletic events, you name it, that's what I wanted. And that's what I have. What else? When the, and I know I'm being timed, so I'm stressed.
No, 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 don't stress, you still have quite.
So I just also want to let you know that March Madness comes around, and I'm just all over the place, I know, but when March Madness comes around, the high school kids are going crazy, because they want him on his team. They're fighting because they want him on his team. And guess what? Our superintendent's on a team. Our old superintendent never was. I want to also say, when I got, when my daughter got into third grade at TVES, that's when Mr. Schoonmaker became the prince, the superintendent. That's when, and all through my children's years, I have always been involved with the PTO. Third, when my daughter was in third grade at TVES, Mr. Schoonmaker started a committee, I don't know, it was called PAC. Oh, you gonna stop me?
Just finished.
Okay. They started a PAC committee, and I don't know if you know what that is, but it's a parent advisory council, where the PTO members go and meet with Mr. Schoonmaker once a month at different schools. We were able to tour all the schools with him, showing us what has been done, what the future is. I have to finish this quickly, I'm almost done.
Brandy, Brandy.
Then I'll sit down and come up again. Can I do that? Can I do that? Or can I finish?
I have to keep you to the two minutes.
All right, then I'll wait till the next.
But you could have someone else.
Go ahead.
Bill Severstano, Sunnyside Drive. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Congratulations to the new board members. I can see by the assignments, you got quite a task. I think it's very complimentary to you, for people, any of these people that get on the board to do the duties ahead. My item centered about, in reference to the agenda, would be about transparency. Now, early September, when some stuff became noticed, I looked up YouTube videos that weren't there for two years. Some people, I think, would know about it. And public access was all messed up. Within a month's time, that all got corrected. Another item for transparency, on the, on the school website, under Board of Ed, you have the agenda's minutes. On the subcommittee minutes, there's nothing there for two months. I don't know if someone just dropped a ball on that, and just, with all the turmoil, there's just nobody had time to put it up there, but it'd be nice to have something there, so we know what the subcommittees do, since there's so many. I know you probably don't have a clerk for that, but somebody's gotta do it. It's probably meant to be up there for a reason, so. And also on the executive sessions, I can only compare this to the town council meetings, which I go through all the time. There seem to be a lot of executive session meetings here. So I know there's five items devoted to the criteria for the item to go to executive session. So I'm saying, maybe we can revisit those criteria, and maybe we can see a little bit more as far as the, that goes. And we'll be active with that. Over and above that, I just wanted to say something about, is that my, okay. I start off with a thank you, and I'm gonna end with a thank you. I want to thank all the administrators, teachers, principals, and of course Scott for Veterans Day, and for what you do in town for the veterans. You know, Wednesday last week, we had a luncheon in the back here, and the little ones from TVES come over, did the pledge of allegiance, sang a song. It don't, it don't get better than that. And of course Friday, at the high school, I was there at Jerome for breakfast, and I shot over to high school. High school does a nice thing in that your veterans sit, okay?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I'll be back.
I can't read you all.
Thank you again.
But thank you. My bad, I'll just finish my what I have to say.
Brandy Little, 36, Old Turnpike. And I'm going to conclude with, when Newtown happened, I was with Mr. Schoonmaker for a PAC meeting. We finished the PAC meeting, and he went right into mode. Mr. Schoonmaker was the one who made sure that all of our schools had armed police officers, and he continues to stand by the security and safety of our schools. And lastly, when Floyd Parnez passed away, I cannot tell you the devastation that was, the cross-country, indoor and outdoor track. I have never seen the devastation like that with these poor kids. When I went to that school and walked in there, there was Mr. Schoonmaker, and yes, some of the administrators, he was there in a circle reflecting with all these children that were sobbing over this. It was Mr. Schoonmaker who was doing this. So when it comes to voting to add another year to his contract, I really think you need to think long and hard about what you're gonna do. Thank you.
My name is Lynn Riordan, I live at 33 Darrell Farm Road. At the very end of this, you're gonna see that I refer to all of you women sitting up here as intelligent, so I'm going to say, don't question our intelligence sitting in the back to not renew the contract of our superintendent is like firing him. So, having said that, public education is not mentioned in the federal constitution, and there is a reason our founders made educating children the responsibility of the state and not local government. I'm aware that there are a plethora of laws that govern public education, however, there needs to be a wall that separates our children's education from North Bramford's town council. Our administrators and educators are very qualified, and they should be the ones driving the education bus for the North Bramford students. They have lived, practiced, and considered carefully what the goals of education should be, and what the hurdles are for improving educational outcomes for our children. Local government should not infiltrate any board of education attempting to micromanage operational details when their main focus is financial by nature. Having spent a very brief time with each of you, I know you are all very intelligent women. I hope each of you have the ability to think for yourselves and do the right thing by renewing the contract of this, yes, my friend, Scott Schoonmaker. Bureaucracy cannot teach our children. Thank you.
Are there other public comments?
Yeah.
On the agenda.
Victor Peter Andrea, 123 Beach Street. Like some of the people in this room, they disagree with redoing this contract. I have a letter here from a lawyer, forensic audit. Videos A through D, there's a lot of controversy of what was going on with my son. Silver SUV chased him down, caused him to go in a hospital and lose his scholarship. That SUV is Scott Schoonmaker in a room, right here on video, teaching my kid, causing him to go to a hospital. It's gonna be public, it's gonna be right here. You got something to say on speaker? Here's the rest of the correspondence. If anybody got any questions, could talk to me outside.
Any additional public comments related to the agenda?
Mark Basil, head football coach, North Bramford. I'm here to speak on behalf of my staff, my players, and what Mr. Schoonmaker has meant to us. He's a guy that's very visible, as Brandy had said. I think if you talk to any one of the players, the kids throughout the school, they'll tell you what they think of him. He is engaging, he really genuinely wants to know how their day's going, how their academics are going, how their athletics are going. He makes a point, he created a wellness center, pretty much a social area in which high school students are able to engage and better themselves physically, mentally, become more socially active with one another, and has been an outstanding addition to our high school. He's down there all the time, training, working out with the kids. The connection that we've made among, between faculty, players, coaches, is something that had been missing for a long time. He's been a motivator for my players, for us as a staff, for myself. I know he makes every effort to get out there and support his kids. Games he's at all the time, concerts, whatever. I do recall this past spring, he made a point on a Saturday to attend our state championship softball game, when he was supposed to be on a 12-hour road trip to Indiana. And he delayed that with his son for a college trip, so if that doesn't say what he's about, you know, there's not too much else that would. You know, I feel that, you know, I've had the good fortune of working for five different school districts, under five different superintendents. And he's clearly one of the best superintendents I've ever had a chance to work for. And I appreciate everything he's done for myself, my players, my coaches, the community, my kids, I had three kids go through here. You know, I just want to have the support here for him, and I hope that you can see that side of it. And I hope that I kind of brought that to light a little bit. So thank you, Scott.
Enisa Husky Norton, 7 Fawn Meadow Lane. I don't envy any of you, I spent eight years in your seats, and it is, at times, a thankless job. And I, for one, thank you for volunteering your time, for being here. And I plead with you to make your own decisions, unbiased of persuasion from community members, from political leaders at the state level, at town level, to make your own decision when it comes to renewing contracts of our superintendent, of our business manager, of all of that. You are privy to information that we are not. And I can tell you, as a parent, what I look for in leadership of our school district is somebody that can educate the whole child, that somebody that could lead our district to make our kids, make this school a better place for our kids. And that's a job that I firmly believe that Scott Schoonmaker excels at. I've worked with two other superintendents who I have a lot of respect for, and I have just as much, if not more, respect for Scott Schoonmaker. So I plead with you to make your own decision, totally separate from any bias on renewing any kind of contracts. Thank you.
Hi, Mike Karen, 52 Blue Jay Drive, up in Northford. I'm also one of the football coaches, but I want to speak for Scott. I had three kids go through the system. My three kids were all two years apart, and we had a mandatory rule, because by the time we get back from practice, the kids, so everybody had to have dinner together. And my daughter went through first, and while she was going through, it was under another administration, our dinner conversation was about what fight, who got thrown out of school, who got suspended, who's in ISS, all this stuff, right? It was, everything was negative. Major distractions the whole time in school. My son, second one, came through when Scott, he was a junior when Scott came in. And he had some learning issues, and it started to change a little bit. His first two years, it was a lot of negative, no motivation to really learn anything in school. And through Scott and what he set up with his administration, the culture in the school started to change. My youngest one came through, it was like night and day. It was night and day, like, there was never any negatives at dinner. It was always positives, who's doing what, who's going to school where, who's gonna play football where, who's gonna play baseball where, you know, in college levels. And I know he's participated, always stayed interested with the kids, and getting them into these upper-level management programs. So, I mean, I go around proud of talking about our school system, I tell the story all the time. And one of the things, I remember when Mark and I had been coaching for 16 years, and we used to be in the bus, coming back from a game on a Friday night, our ears were always in the back, okay, which kid's gonna go out and get in trouble tonight? Who's gonna do this, who's gonna do that? By the time our youngest kids, they played football together, it was almost boring. It's like, who's gonna bake cookies? Who's gonna make cake? You know, so the culture just really changed, and really supports the kids' education. It'd be a real shame if this wasn't gonna be allowed to continue. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rita Rienzo, 107 Deepwood Lane in Northford. I feel like I'm a little late to the party. I haven't attended very many of these meetings, but when I heard that there was a possibility that Mr. Schoonmaker's contract might not get renewed, I felt like I had to come. He's visible, he's responsive, he's involved. There hasn't been anyone here who's had anything other than positive commentary to say about him. There's not anyone here who's made any commentary about why his contract shouldn't be renewed. And I feel like if you're not going to renew this man's contract, you owe the taxpayers of this town a very clear and objective rationale, bullet points, and data about what led to your decision. Because we're paying for this man to lead our children's education, and if you're gonna make those kind of decisions, I think you owe it to us to lay out the reasons why. We haven't heard anything here. We haven't heard anything here that would lead us to think that he's not the right person to continue on in this district. Thank you.
Colby O'Rourke, Carlin Drive. I just wanted to say, I know, Sarah, you gave an explanation about the fact that it may not be a non-renewal, it just won't be an extension of his contract because there may be a new way of doing things where maybe we just go two years out, or, I know earlier on Facebook, Mike Doody had said maybe a year-to-year contract. I ask all of you to take pause with that. Scott's not gonna be our superintendent forever, and if you wanna be competitive in hiring the next person, would you rather be a superintendent that, first of all, even with everything in the paper, I don't know how you'd get a good superintendent after Scott anyway, but if, would you rather have a superintendent, if, would you, as a superintendent, rather have a school district that renews your contract three years out, whereas this contract year-to-year? That's not how a superintendent's supposed to plan, long-term planning. So I would ask that each of you consider that, if that is a policy change you're going to make, or if that's something you're gonna do moving forward, that there be some real concrete evidence behind that. Sarah, I know when you were superintendent, I'm sure it was three years out. It's basically, it's the standard everywhere. So if you're going to make North Branford the exception, please consider the ramifications of that.
Liz Hoskins, 43 David Lane. I'm also here in support of Scott Schoonmaker's renewal of his contract. I'm gonna piggyback what everybody else has said. I'm very involved in the schools, I've been to the PAC meetings. The one thing I can say was, when we have a PAC meeting, he knows the first names of so many students, he's asking about their loved ones, he's asking how their ankle is doing from the previous injury. He is involved, he knows our students, because he wants to know their stu, his students. The other thing that always strikes me whenever I tour any of the schools is the amount of pride that the students have in their school. I mean, T-Bird pride runs deep here. And who do we, who do we acclaim that to? We have excellent administrators, we have excellent staff, we have excellent teachers, and we have an excellent superintendent at the helm, and that's why our schools are so fabulous. So I ask you to continue renewing his contract. Thank you.
Any additional comments on the agenda?
I'm back. Lynn Riordan, 33 Darrell Farm Road. I've been thinking, and the whole word "friend," referring to Scott as a friend, I never said "best friend," as Alfred said, but I did say, at some point, I'm sure, "friend." I'm gonna remind everybody why he is my friend and will forever be my friend. When my son died in 2009, the principal at the time did not want to come to my house to address the fact that she lost, as Scott said, "one of her own." So he said, "Yes, not only will you go to her house," because he's a loving man, a father of four, who happens to have two children, Mia's age at the time, they were three. He said, "Not only will I, not only will you go, but I will escort you to be sure that you go." This is the gentleman, he was a superintendent for six months at the time. He didn't know me from a hole in the wall, not at all. But my son, Matt Pichudo, was one of his, the day he chose to be our superintendent. So I would find serious exception to any one person sitting up here who chooses not to renew the contract of our superintendent with everyone who has so many wonderful things to say. Yes, you're gonna have to come up with a list, a very extensive, long list as to why. Not because some people in the town council, this is what they want, or they think it's financially going to be better. Because if you look at the, what a principal makes and what a superintendent makes, there should be a difference in there. So I can't imagine who you're gonna hire where you're gonna actually save money, $10,000, $20,000, really, in the scheme of town business? What is that? It's nothing. So I hope you all think long and hard, because you guys are driving this bus right now, you are in charge. So I hope you take your responsibilities very seriously and think more than once, more than twice, before you choose not to renew this gentleman's contract. Thank you. I'm not coming back.
Hi, I'm Cindy Anastasio. I am a parent and an educator in another district, and I'm just here to say how much support I give completely to Scott Schoonmaker. He has totally been involved every step of the way. Everything that everyone's said here is, is who he is. On my part, as an educator, you know, I see what my superintendent does, I would pay anything to have him in my district. You know, amazing. Like, is there, knows the kids, everything that everyone has said. My kid is here at North Branford High School because of him. Where there are other people who would say, "Send your kid here, send your kid here." Yeah, my kid has the smarts, but my kid wasn't sure where he wanted to go. Scott took the time, eighth grade night, when they came over, and besides, you know, he was going over for football and sports and things like that, he took the time and showed him the academic stuff that was available at the high school, and let him know how great the high school was. That night was his decision, he was going to North Branford. And he's doing exceptionally well, as long as my daughter coming through the school system exceptionally well. I'm just so happy and blessed that they are here in this system, and I thank him for that. So please consider keeping him as long as you possibly can in our district. Thank you.
Louise Ramada, 2 Lasalle Way. I've had four children that are in the school system. My sixth grader the other day saw Mr. Schoonmaker in his school, and the first thing he said to me was, "The superintendent was in our school today," and he said hi to me. My two daughters played three sports in North Branford, he is at, I don't remember a game that he wasn't at for at least five minutes. He always makes an appearance, he is always there. The biggest story is, my 22-year-old daughter graduated from college, no longer his student, she emailed him, and he helped her to get an internship for her, after college, to get her degree. So I'm here to keep Scott Schoonmaker as long as we can. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shanna Basom. I live on Village Street in Northford. I'm here to support Scott Schoonmaker. I'm gonna try to get through this without crying, but I have two children in the school system, Grandpa Gardis and Lila Pagardis. Many of you probably know that Lila got diagnosed with cancer. Scott helped organize a community event to support my daughter. He made her feel special, not different. She was proud, she was bold, and never afraid to take off her hat in public. And that's a gift that I can really never repay. He made her feel like she was a million dollars. And I also think that event not only helped my daughter and my family, but all the kids and friends of hers, because they know, now that she's gone, that they were there for her, and they supported her. And that was, and that is irreplaceable, and it's things I can never repay. So I just can't thank him enough, and I think he's probably one of the best things about our school system right now. I grew up in this town, I didn't know who my superintendent was, and there was never a question, since the day my son went into kindergarten, was Mrs. Berry's first grade class. He came and read a book to the class, and you don't get that, you don't get the support. And my family thanks him, and I just hope that he will stay in this community and teaching, help teach our children. Thank you.
I'm taking a break from out front, but my name is Lou Paton-Austen, 21 Oxbo Lane, and there's probably no one in this room that had despised Scott more than I did a few years ago, prior to being on Board of Ed. I'm being dead honest, I'm being dead honest, and I, it needs to be said. My daughter was suspended from sports for a year. First person in your 300 to be suspended for a year from sports, she did something stupid. I fought with Scott, I still remember, in the office. I fought with him about it. And it was one of the better things that he did for my daughter, because she learned right and wrong. And then I got on the Board of Ed for four years, and I got to know Scott. Scott is nothing but great for this town. He has done nothing wrong. And I'll be honest with you, Scott, I voted no for his raise three out of four years. It wasn't because of his performance, it was because of the economic times. But I voted for a year, year extension, every year, for Don, for Scott, and the technology, I voted a year. And if Don will verify this, I broke into two motions, raise and the extension, because I felt that if I can't give him a raise, but I'm not gonna deny him his year. And I believe that's, and one other thing is that, I have to say, is, my kids are out of college and are still learning lessons from Mr. Schoonmaker. My sister passed away about two, three years ago, from cancer, on a Friday night, and it was between Christmas and New Year's. Funeral was in West Haven, mind you, school's closed. Who's the first person my kids saw get out of the car? Mr. Schoonmaker. He was in West Haven to pay his respect to my sister. Mind you, my kids learned from that, because they said, "Well, what is he doing here?" You know? You know? They learn that, as a parent, you do things, and you don't expect any things, but Scott was the first one there, it was, I don't know, right before New Year's, whatever it was, that time, he was there, and he's still there. So the kids are still learning, my kids are still learning from Mr. Schoonmaker today in their years. Thank you.
Any additional comment, public comment on the agenda at this time? No additional public comment? All right, then we will move on. Thank you, and thank you for the decorum. Moving on to our student reps.
Hi, guys. Hi.
On the music front, the annual North Branford High School cabaret was held on October 27th and sponsored by the music department at North Branford High School. This annual event includes a pasta dinner and a show with two seedings held, one at 5:00 PM and the other at 7:00 PM. All proceeds are used to offset the costs associated with the annual trip sponsored by the North Branford High School Music Department. This year's theme was '90s music with a faculty member closing out the 7:00 PM show. Additionally, the East Haven North Branford High School co-op marching band participated in the U.S. Bands competition on October 28th at the Veterans Memorial Stadium in New Brandon. They were awarded first place and named the Connecticut State Champions and the New England State Champions. Forty-seven students are in the marching band, including 10 students from North Branford High School.
The North Branford High School field hockey team completed a 15-0-1 regular season, and they are headed to the Class S State Championships at 10:00 AM on Saturday in Weathersfield versus Grand Bay. Girls soccer and boys soccer both qualified for postseason tournament play, with home games slotted for the first round of the CIAC State Tournament. Field hockey and girls soccer both captured Shoreline Championship titles. The North Branford High School cross-country team participated in the Shoreline Cross-Country Championship event on October 20th, and the CIAC State Championship event at Wickham Park in Manchester on October 28th.
On November 2nd and November 3rd, NBHS and the NB Wellness District Committee hosted two HEAT, Heroin Education Action Team assemblies. The November 2nd program was available to parents and community members during the evening, with students attending the program during the school hours on November 3rd. The program is provided by the Connecticut Department of Justice focusing upon the opiate epidemic. All the presenters were very complimentary to our students, conduct, and insightful questions.
The NBHS Wounded Warriors Club hosted the annual Veterans Day event, with several veterans visiting on November 10th. Display tables and stations were set up in the gymnasium, providing high school classes with the opportunity to hear from veterans and see some artifacts from the various eras in American history during times of war. The day began with coffee and concluded with lunch being served to the veterans.
Thank you very much.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
And we will move on to approval of previous minutes. We have the October 19th, 2017 regular meeting minutes, exhibit B. Solved. Okay, we need a meeting motion, Marcie move, to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
Under corrections, I made a mistake, I misspoke, and I need to change the date of the motion from October 18th, which is what I said, to October 19th. Which was on, can I even tell you where that is, Mayor?
No.
You know exactly where it is?
Yeah.
So I'm sorry about that. So that needs to be corrected. I don't know if there are any additional corrections?
I don't see any.
Anything else? Okay, then, all in favor? I. Opposed? Abstaining? So we pass the minutes. Then we have the November 1st, 2017 special meeting minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 1st, 2017 regular Board of Education special meeting.
Solved.
Okay, Marcie, second?
Second.
Beth? Any discussion changes?
I see it.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Okay, so we pass the minutes. Move on to personnel, resignations.
Thank you. Excuse me. We received a retirement resignation from Joanne Palmieri, school nurse at North Branford High School, effective June of this year. She has been our school nurse for the past 29 years, and she has been an exceptional employee, so dedicated to our students. I wish the two were still here to speak, go for her. I frequent there, mostly around lunchtime, and get a chance to stop in and see her quite a bit. And she's always engaged with the students, she's always on top of things that are happening in their lives, and I just wanna personally thank her for her dedicated service, wish her nothing but the best. She's gonna be spending a lot more time with her grandchildren, with her family, so thank you for 29 years, Joanne Palmieri. And Mr. Stuffer, I have.
I'd like to congratulate her, she's also graduated from the school, and her family is a family of educators, as well, her brother and her children, who are her favorite, so congratulations and thank you. This is all her.
Thank you, Mr. Stuffer.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the retirement resignation from Joanne Palmieri, school nurse at North Branford High School, effective June of 2018, after 29 years of dedicated service to the students of North Branford, with grateful appreciation.
Solved.
Thank you, Marcie, second?
Second.
Beth, seconded it. Under discussion, I just wanna say that I, Joanne was the school nurse when I taught at the high school, and when my daughter was at the high school, and she was, she reminded me of a mom. She would have kids in her office, she would be taking care of them, nursing them, but also mothering them. She's a phenomenal lady, and I wish her well. Any other discussion? All right, do we wanna roll call, or all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Okay. And, let's see. Under appointments, there are none at this time, leaves?
I don't think, we, I thought there was going to be one, but there isn't, so you can just, there's no need to move this into executive session.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. It's truly an honor to recognize North Branford School District's 2018 Teacher of the Year, who is here, and I've been here a long time, Rob, for being here tonight, and is your family here?
No, they're in bed.
They're in bed. His wife, Christine, his daughter Nora, and his son, Beckett, hopefully they are in bed. But I'm gonna read this, Rob, because the members of the audience don't have a copy of this, and I think it's important that they, they hear how involved you are in the total school environment, and some of the things you've done in your career here in North Branford. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Rob Ford as the North Branford Public Schools 2018 District Teacher of the Year. Rob is an English teacher at North Branford High School, a 612 English Department Chair, data team leader, high school tech liaison, SAT test site coordinator, and a member of Safe School Climate Team. Rob is the true abiding of a leader. He works to facilitate the growth of others. He's supportive and dedicated to his colleagues and students. Rob consistently holds his students to high expectations, he creates challenging yet accessible learning opportunities for all students. Rob is not afraid to try new things, or step out of his comfort zone. He's worked to improve. He's worked to improve the success and accessibility of the AP program. He is instrumental in initiating and supporting new technology, technology initiatives within classrooms district-wide. Rob has also earned the opportunity to present at the National Council for Teachers English Conference in Atlanta. Uh, on a side note, Rob, it's been thirteen years and you were commuting from Providence, Rhode Island for a hundred years.
Four years.
For four years, uh, Rob would get in the car from Providence and drive here to North Branford again. Uh, I, I wanna personally thank you, I've had the opportunity to work for you the last eight years, it's been, it's been a pleasure. So congratulations, well deserved, and I know your administrators and coworkers are so happy for you. So please join me in congratulating you. My, my secretary asked a question in flies and I said maybe a plane would be better. Papers to correct. Okay, there are no, uh, there are no donations at this time. Uh, communications, your board briefs are attached, there's been, obviously I say this, in every board member. Administrators have been beyond busy, uh, if you have been fortunate enough to stop into any of the schools recently for the Veterans Day programs and, and other activities that have been going on. Uh, there, there's just been some exceptional things happening and I want to thank them and them and for their efforts. Uh, that being said, I'll open it up if you have any questions about any of the communications exhibits.
No, I would just like to comment on how nice Jerome's Veterans Day breakfast and programs.
Great, great deal of effort, time, preparation goes into those programs, so thank you, all of you. Uh, there were no field trips at this time. Next on the agenda, we've had conversations regarding the ACE's program, the Center for the Arts. I don't know if there's further comments or anything that you wanted to discuss or questions?
Well, I, I think that the reason we were discussing it originally was because we were concerned about costs. We wanted to, um, make certain that the students had the opportunity to participate in ECA. But we were also concerned about our budget. And, um, I know that we, we did some research and we did some research and we found that we can, um, if need be, open spots up to students and have them self-pay until such time in the district and cover that. That is something we wanted to do, gave us more options because we had thirteen students there. And in the past, I believe we only funded, what, eight?
I believe.
Generally, it was like four to five and then one year we had a bump to eight and then this past year was twelve or thirteen kids.
Right.
Which.
So as we were going on budget season, you know, we started talking about it early on and we started grappling with it because we want, I mean, I personally want our students to have that opportunity. Because so Rob and the English Department do an awesome job with creative writing. The ACE's program offers diversity, access to college professors who come in on a guest lecturing basis. Um, artists in residence. Uh, it just, it brings together kids from all over the, um, greater New Haven area. They're now starting their international program. So I personally cannot say enough good about the program. I think what we have to do as a board is to figure out what we can afford to pay and then how to take care of the kids that are already in but make certain that other children are, are able to participate, um, within, within the funding but without excluding anyone. See, I want the best of everything. I want them to be able to go and I want us to be able to afford it. So I think that's what we have to discuss.
Regarding the budget, if you recall, one of the problems is when we get notified.
Right.
Um, you know, it's not until April or, and so.
As to how many have been admitted.
And I'm not sure if there's anything you can do about that, but that's one of the challenges.
Well, my thought on it was if we decide on a dollar amount that we're willing to put, not willing, that we're able to put into this. If there's five kids and it's enough to cover all five, a hundred percent, fine. If there's ten kids, you split the pot between ten kids, how do you pick and choose which ones you're gonna pay for and which ones you're not gonna pay for?
Well, my, my problem, my only problem with that, because I see what you're saying. My only problem with that would be that we had started kids there at no cost to their parents and I would hate to pull the rug out from under them.
I would hate to do that too, but I'd also hate to lose a classroom teacher. You know, I mean, the budget's gonna be really tough this year, really tough this year.
What, what I.
When did you say the number was, uh, how many kids are there?
There were thirteen.
Twelve.
There's twelve.
Twelve this year.
We have twelve at four thousand seven hundred dollars, so we, we are spending fifty-six thousand dollars in total for the twelve students.
We were gonna, um, look into what areas schools, how many students areas schools send, do we have that or can we get that?
We, we can easily get it.
I mean.
Because I think that's important, I will say, I know some large districts, um, send about ten. So that, that is a lot of students, they're a small district and I also buy incredible dollars.
It is a lot. And we're charging our students seventy-five dollars. We're charging our students seventy-five dollars to play sports.
It's a problem, I don't know.
You know, I mean.
The, the numbers have varied, last year we had eight students enrolled, back in two thousand ten, eleven, we had eight students enrolled. But back in ten, eleven, the cost of tuition that we were responsible per student was one thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. So from two thousand eleven, seven years later.
Three thousand dollars increased.
At forty-seven hundred dollars and our number has, has gone from eight to twelve. It's our highest number that we've had. It did dip in twelve when, uh, we started paying the complete tuition for the students. We had four, following year we had one, then we had two, three, five, last year eight, this year twelve.
Well, you stay used to pay half and at one, at one point there was an interim commissioner who said that you could not charge them. And that's when we went to full funding.
Coleman started out as chef.
Right, no, I, I understand that, but I think we have to figure something out. I mean, we got rid of freshman sports this year. Previous year, we started charging seventy-five dollars a student to play sports.
Fifty dollars at the middle school.
Fifty dollars at the middle school, I mean.
Seven times for high school, like half of three hundred.
Alright, I guess, I guess the problem would be, from my perspective, I, three of, three of the twelve are graduating, I believe. So you'll be down to nine that have already started and have already started under the premise that we pay for them. You know, I, I, I'm wondering if it isn't something where you would allow students to audition and go with the understanding that they would have to fund it until the money became available for them. And then, once you get, once you get down to, you know, whatever number it is that you decide or we decide is affordable, um, or, or you could then go to, go to what Marcie was suggesting before with them paying fifty percent. I just have a hard time taking something away from kids, I know we're all.
But we're not, we're not taking it away, I mean, the parents are just gonna have to subsidize it a little bit. We, we in, we implemented pay-to-play, I mean, you know, kids entered high school thinking they weren't gonna have to pay to play sports and, and we did it. And it would then go into school.
But they can't play to be certain that if they couldn't afford it.
Right.
There was money, money for them to go. I'm worried about kids that are benefiting from this, that may not have the wherewithal to continue going.
Because they already started.
Because they've already started and, and all of a sudden we're changing the rules, I, I just, I, I don't feel good about changing the rules.
I, I, I have a, a potential with, with our school choice program. With twenty-four students that come in and we are receiving money per student. If we were to earmark monies from that account offset, so we have nine going out, or nine currently, three graduating. If there's a number that you wanna pick, we could use school choice money, which would not impact our budget at all.
And the kids would not have the, they would not have the rules change on, on their being able to go right now? And then, we would have to look at what we're doing for incoming freshmen, whether it was a fifty-fifty split or, um.
We have to do that soon, when do they start?
Like, we start, we start the budget soon too.
So I know that there was recently an open house for this, was it a couple of weeks ago and do we have any idea how many students?
We, we held it at the middle school, I don't, um, I don't know, it just looked like we had to sign up by about twenty students. Twenty that were interested, okay, so there were twenty that were interested, that doesn't mean, they have to audition, uh, they have to be selected. There's a process so they usually means down, so, um.
That's twenty new students, that's not existing, they don't have to audition every year?
Eighth graders. Eighth graders.
No, once they're in, once they audition and it's pretty rigorous to get in.
Oh, it's tough.
It's, it's pretty rigorous and, um, once they're in, they're in.
How do you get funds for the school choice program?
It, it's mandated, so we, we open up X amount of seats, the board, uh, approves the number that we have, we're at our maximum number now. So we get three thousand dollars per student, per year for those students to care for some of their educational costs.
I, I have a question.
And how is that money being used now, it's not being used for ECA?
For student use, we have the ability to, to use it.
But what is it being used for now, currently?
Right now?
Yeah.
There's a number of things that it could be spent, I'd have to look at.
But right now, so that, that's I guess what I'm asking, like, when I, when I see a budget, I like to see line items and specifics
Yeah, I. It, it, yeah.
Because otherwise it gets kind of dicey when someone comes at us.
No, I, what, what I'm saying is I don't, I don't have it right here, but we could easily break that out.
Right, he, okay. They have a printout.
That'd be great, just so we could see where it's transferring, because we're gonna have to account for that on line items
Yeah, yeah.
And the next time we come to one of these meetings, I'd like to be able to say to everyone, we've transferred this much from student choice to move to ECA. We can prof, you know, send this many kids and this is how we're gonna do it over a three-year plan, just like a three-year contract. We should have a long-term plan because when someone enters as a freshman, we wanna make sure they can graduate as a senior because that's emotionally disturbing for a child and it's important to years.
Absolutely, absolutely. I know, uh, Don, part of choice money paid for the scoreboard, school choice.
Mm-hmm.
So the, the scoreboard at the softball field, that came out of, um, donations and, um, part of school choice money.
We used open choice money to pay for the, um, refurb, or the reconstruction of the, uh, Family Consumer Science Room at the high school. Those are the kinds of things we often do with it that are.
So you have flexibility.
Yes, we do. But I, I can break out, I know those are a couple of things.
That'd be perfect, thank you.
I wanna say the kids' kitchen.
Yeah, no, that's, that's where I saw the Family Consumer Science Room, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we have all new cabinets, flooring and, you know, that was, that was all open choice money.
Now, I have a question because I, I believe, and I may have my ears mixed up, but I believe that the Yale program has gone away and we used to budget five thousand for the Yale program. And I see the ECA program as being comparable as far as it's sort of a gifted program that enhances our students' education. I'm wondering, you know, if we already allocated that five thousand or is it still there perhaps for this?
I would have to look, I, I don't recall whether we took that Yale money out last year or not, or for this year.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, you know, trying to, to think where we could, you know, get money. And then.
It'd also be helpful if we had a target number of students that we could afford and we compared against towns of the same size and same, you know, similar socioeconomic makeup.
Do you think they could get that at the next phase of meeting, do you think they could give you a printout of like?
And I think that's what Diane was saying.
Would you call?
I could add, yeah, we can, we can get that, we'll get that for you. Because I think Diane and Metron and you are, are correct in that we should look at our similar surrounding towns and see what they're recording and all. But I also think we need to make it clear to parents that though we may have a limited number of slots or a limited number of money available, that shouldn't discourage students from auditioning and, and looking to go. But there, there is also private pay, because they told me that many families pay individual tuition because the town's just, you know, we're not the only town that can't afford to send everyone.
But how do you, how do you determine which child gets the funding and which doesn't?
Well, you know, we help.
We have to have a very clear process outline because I can tell you as a mom, I'd be livid.
Right, right. We used to do a lottery in North Haven because we could only afford to send two students. So that was two per year that the town could pay for. But then the other students that got in, parents were welcome to pay tuition for them, just like you would, you would pay for, for the elite sports things that, for the dance lessons and all. So we had a lottery and it was well-attended because they wanted to make certain that, you know, basically it was a drawing and you would draw the two names that, um, were wanted.
It's typically done by an outside.
And then as they move, you know, you, you know, so that's one way to do it, I'm not saying it's the best way to do it.
Yeah.
I sort of liked the, the split that you used to have here where people were, you know, there was a cost share to it. But I, I don't know, I don't know what the board thinks and I don't know what Don.
I'd like to see.
We can get the data and we'll get it, I'll get it back to you, we have time.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be important and I think what we're gonna see in our many districts that are putting donations on it.
Could we get, I'd be grateful.
I'll be able to break out the, the other money, the account and that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would, that would be helpful.
In some of. But I just, I know we had the discussion at the last meeting about the students that are currently enrolled right now. The commitment was to, to.
To, to take care of course, continue.
Take care of them through their completion of it, okay, that's important.
Yeah, yeah, and we're just gonna have to figure out how to do that.
Carrying forward.
Well, they can have a car wash.
Yeah. Many car washes.
Right.
Right, um, do we wanna move on then, Scott, to the use of the hearing officer?
Okay, there's no other questions or comments, use of the hearing officer versus, um, an attorney. And I, just for clarification, the, the attorney would still be in use if we were to use the board. Uh, we would need representation there and depending upon the number of hours. So I don't, I don't want to mislead or have you assume that there would be no cost if we were to go a different direction from, um, using the hearing officer. Because we still would have, we'd have to have somebody there to represent in that legal hearing, if it's for discipline or transportation or.
So in the past, years ago, the board used to do it and a lot of times it was stipped out.
Right.
But there's, correct me if I'm wrong, do we run the risk of having a stipulated agreement and then they show up with an attorney and say the, the agreements out the window or not?
Well, then, then, when they show up with an attorney, all that's a rock, it becomes a full expulsion.
That's the head of the line. Right, but we don't, but if we were expecting this and we don't have an attorney or a hearing officer here.
Oh, no, they're scheduled, like, you can't, it's not on demand.
Yeah, they're not stipulation, you'd sign out ahead of time, like, before you would have it.
You have, you have ten days, so we have a ten-day window and, you know, we would know ahead of time but we would need, uh, obviously the attorney to process everything and be there if we do, uh, even with the stipulated.
That's what I'm saying.
To have someone go in and enter us into and then, um, it would be quick, it would be a quick process. Um, but you're gonna get charged for at least transportation here, if it's, he's here for fifteen minutes, it's gonna be a charge of an hour. Um, and then any preparation, uh, for that.
And how, and we pay the hearing officer what?
Hearing officer, uh, is four hundred dollars. Um, and that, ten years ago, it was three hundred dollars and we increased it a couple of years ago, uh, to four hundred dollars. And it's, we, we do it based upon, um, the preparation time, pre, uh, gathering all of the information, um, processing, coming through and then running the, the, uh, hearing and then obviously the follow-on report and decision after. So it's usually five or six hours, we, we ballpark it, um, at approximately seventy-five dollars per hour.
I'm not certain that the money is, should be the only driving force though. And I'd be interested in hearing what the rest of the board thinks. I think there's a benefit to having three board members that are mothers or grandmothers or, or, you know, community members sitting there and deciding because I think sometimes, well, actually I think the law's intent is more to have board members acting than to have a hearing officer. I, I understand that the hearing officer might be less expensive, I think that's what I'm hearing you say, um, but.
If you look at the attorney, if you compare it to the attorney.
Right. Right, but I'm not certain myself that that's, it seems like, it seems like you might be better with three brains instead of one.
The only, the only guidelines that I would caution the board against is that, one, you're, you're impartial hearing board so if you have any connection or knowledge of the student or the family, you should, you should sell from the hearing.
Yeah.
So, and, and not saying that you couldn't be there, but I know we have three here that. So and and not saying that you couldn't be there, but I know we have three here that that.
Have children.
Or four are working during the day. We hold these usually and it's within, again, a a ten-day window. So you you do run that risk of not being able to put together three board members when we do it within.
Yeah. But you can, a lot of districts do the expulsion hearings at night, um because their board members are all available then. So you could you could always look at that, but I I don't know how the other people feel.
You know, I'm just gonna say something um in that and I'm gonna quote something I heard before. A month ago, I would have agreed with this.
Okay.
But this month, I'm really not because confidentiality, which I stated last month, is critical. And some of the best well-played plans that might be confidential got out, evidenced by this crowd. So I wanna say that I'm in support of a hearing officer because I think it would be devastating if things that were said in that kind of expulsion hearing got out and I'm not confident that it wouldn't. Um so I wouldn't wanna be a part of it, although I know I wouldn't talk about it. Um I think it may be best that we use confidential sources, but.
Diane, I agree with you.
Thank you.
I agree as well. Okay. Then it sounds like it's decided. Thank you.
Okay, uh moving on along. I have a PowerPoint handouts for you for our three new board members. These are a continuation of our meeting a couple of months ago and I promise I will be brief, as brief as I possibly can. There's handouts that will accompany the PowerPoint. I'm not gonna leave these verbatim, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, no. Are these different? Are these different?
They are different. One will say uh handouts.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Okay, either one of us.
Is that too dark for the board? You're okay. The board's up there.
You're good. Sure. That's better. It's better than mine. Yeah.
That's better. Alright, so all time kill. For um for our goals, they're they're gonna align with our uh strategic plan. You all have a copy of the plan through the year two thousand twenty-one. If you weren't present at the meeting when they've uh completed my evaluation, we spoke to the completion of last year's goals and the board then charged me with new goals. That's what I'm gonna just go over tonight. You'll be able to spend time with this packet. If you have any questions, you can send them forward to me. Uh so I'm just gonna.
Three seconds.
Three seconds. Okay, give me one second. So as you see under our uh strategic plan, all of the goals, one, two, and three are under um rigor, the academic rigor, uh in the district. How we're challenging and supporting all students, facilities, uh working with buildings, come to a couple of cases that are outdated and and what we're doing to try to mitigate some of the problems with old buildings. And then obviously our school climate, we've uh we've all heard a great deal about PDIS, uh a lot of the positive things that are happening in the district. The administrative team works incredibly hard uh in making all of our students feel a part of something very special in their pre-K through twelve continuing. As I should say, for many of, some of our students who are twenty-first grade. So, that being said.
Has it been thirty seconds? I don't know. Those two minutes went by really fast.
It is turned on, right?
It is.
Well, you know what? Let's let's open to page one. If it does come on, we'll we'll keep going to it. Uh so, under uh my first goal for rigor, which aligns with our strategic plan, you'll see them numbered below one dash one more. Comprehensive curriculum assessment system based on our management cycle. As you down through the bullets, there'll there'll be a lot of lines about Common Core standards, Next Generation Science, social studies, vertical, horizontal. So if you if you look down, those are the things that we are now implementing. Uh we just went to our digital platform using Google Docs. The schools have been very uh successful in in laying these plans out. They've had great feedback from staff and students. Instructional rounds, there's approvals that will head out uh in January for two-day training, Tracy?
Yes.
For two-day training. Uh we look to bring those back to the district. All administrators will be going out for that. Continuing to evaluate the resources that we have, the the department, what we're doing, um and revising on that management cycle plan. As we move down, graduation requirements. There's a handout uh in your packet on the new graduation uh requirements. And we will speak to some of, I know some of the board members have had uh input into what they wanna see added to different school levels. And I'm I'm pleased to announce that there's uh some things that have already been in place that speak to world language. I know that was something, uh Sarah, you uh had had spoken about over the last two years. This is coming up. Okay, so um under your first handout page where it says two thousand seventeen eighteen district goals, you'll see on the right-hand side highlighted in yellow. You will not see that on the PowerPoint there in the handout. So if you look, you'll see that I have new SMART goals uh for all pre-K, or excuse me, all grade three through grade eight for the ELA and math portion of smarter balance. And the numbers are are um were put together based upon the last three years of our student data collection and the outcomes. Looking at individual students, working with administrators, working with Tracy, um and setting goals that we think were attainable. Uh I'm not gonna go through all of them, but looking at sixty-five percent being the goal this year um in ELA in grade three. And that's, they're fairly similar all the way down. If you go to the right-hand side, the math scores are lower. Uh our goals are lower based upon state results in the data over the last few years. Uh so there's been a significant difference. And we are putting a lot of attention and energy into uh the math, you know, what we're doing to get those scores up. Okay? Uh the standardized testing, uh benchmark testing, three times a year in grades three through eight and using um iRay and and Powerschool to its full capacity to assist all of our staff members and administration. Under rigor, again, uh one dash three, the comprehensive curriculum instruction assessment. Looking at our CAPS though, uh which has been very successful at the high school. A lot of students have engaged in um their learning process by going out and and um working in internships, coming back, working with mentors at the high school, um and and doing presentations. You've seen those at the high school, the middle, the hard touring. We've had great success. We wanna continue to grow and get more students involved and pushing it into the junior class. Project-based learning, inquiry-based learning, a lot of interdisciplinary units, uh and expanded offerings. We've talked about um college credits and opportunities. As you are aware, we have numerous AP offerings at the high school right now for a high school with an enrollment under six hundred students. We're talking about increasing enrollment and looking at how we package our AP and how we sequence sequentially um order them so more students can have an opportunity to enroll in our AP. So we had a conversation at our last meeting about bringing a full year of world language to the to the middle school. And when I went back and shared the conversation with Tracy, she shared, uh if you flip your sheet, to the fourth page, PDAS World Language Plan for two thousand sixteen. Of the handouts. You'll see from ten, two thousand and thirteen fourteen, the number of hours that we have and the frequency for our grade six, seven, and eighth grade students. And if you go to that last page.
That's the one before it.
The one, okay, the first page. I'm on the one that will speak to next year. Okay, that first page, on eighth grade Spanish one students. It's not on your old, it's on the handout. You'll see that our goal next year is to have one hundred and twenty-five of the one hundred and forty-seven students enrolled in a full year of Spanish, which will equate to eighty-five percent of our eighth grade class. Now, we will do that during our AST period, so it'll be a forty-one, forty-one minute key?
Forty-one minutes.
Forty-one minute block of time that will be able to um not interrupt the current schedule at the middle school. We're working towards that, changing that schedule over the next probably two years. But sharing staff between the high school and middle school so that we can offer um that that entire group a full year of Spanish. Now, that will obviously impact when they hit high school. They'll be able to take that Spanish two in their first year as freshman. You do the math three if they choose a fourth year. We'll have more students eligible to take AP if they score out and and wanna take a uh an AP course in a language. Okay? So I know that was something that the board was very interested in. I'm pleased that uh they have their board done that. So anyone keep going, Tracy? These are more uh things that we have been able to do with the preschool expansion and we're looking to get uh NYAP accredited. I know Tracy's been doing a lot of work with that. She'll be going out through that SMART product grant. We're hopefully going to be able to expand our pre-K program this next year. We're looking to do a second class. We have fifteen students enrolled now. Uh and that was by lottery.
And we had a waiting list that we had.
And we had a waiting list um for that. So we are looking to offer potentially a second. We have grant monies and other creative ways that we could offer another fifteen students. You are aware that we have to um meet the needs of our free reduced lunch students or identify special needs students and then uh the remaining slots are open to to other uh regular students. Okay, so that that's been a great uh success for us. We're excited about the possibility of doubling our enrollment next year, which will then just ready uh those those kindergarten students.
Why do you trigger this out party?
There are fours, are four goals. Moving along. Some of the uh computer uh packages that we are using, Apple Track, ASOC, PD Management System. Teachers have been very successful uh with NetBrow for tonight, being able to um work with our staff and really have a a great impact on teaching and learning and tracking student data and and making it uh more simplistic for our staff. Because there's there's so much, uh obviously, they're responsible for if they have a, you know, a case load of over a hundred, hundred and twenty students. Uh you you did approve the PD days, um giving us more opportunities to have shortened days during the year. That that's been a great success and I know Tracy's very appreciative of that. Um Google Docs, as I mentioned before, our job embedded coaching, um and some of the the highlights that you saw. The last meeting, our PD was focused on, we we really worked hard on that. If you've been following the budget, you know that the State Department of Ed um had a cut with the the teen um program that's non-funded right now. I don't think it's definitive that that's gonna happen. I know they're working on it and everybody's in it, so we're gonna wait to see what happens. We haven't hired many new teachers over the last few years. Our last hire was at the high school and uh Mr. Woods has worked to develop an academy that we're sharing with all administrative teams when new teachers come on. And and it really takes on a a broad range of topics that new teachers to the trade need to be aware of. And that could be anything from social media, the dangers of, to, you know, tracking data and and if there's a problem, who do you go to? What's the chain of authority? So uh we've had a lot of success with that and I know the new teachers really appreciate it. Uh let's move on to our next communication goal. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna move quickly through this. There's a a binder I'll pass around. Uh all schools have um put artifacts into the binder for outreach programs, working on um developing um better methods of communication through um their Twitter, through various programs, through their websites. And um they're getting a lot of of positive feedback for that communication, uh so we're gonna continue to encourage that. Uh we're looking at our web service provider, our phone systems. As you heard at the last meeting, we're looking at a new phone system at this time trying to improve on on the uh functionality and abilities. We've had some problems over the last year. Our community outreach programs, you heard about with the P program that was at the high school um two weeks ago. Uh we had great feedback. The students were were fantastic. I mean, they were just absolutely glued, uh listening to that presentation. So I went with knowledge. And this is happening in all buildings. Uh there there's many wonderful things going on that are engaging students, are getting staff involved. Uh we're looking to do more in the community, getting our parents involved as well. All for positive PR if anything's out there. Involve the new school classroom activities. I think we covered that, workshops for parents and students who develop the facilities. There was concerns about how we were um handling work orders. So we dug down and looked at our school group and and how we process through when there are no issues and how quickly we were able to get back uh to the classroom teacher or to the administrator with follow-up and data. So we we are actively using that and I think it's been successful for us. We are gonna do a survey monkey for our custodians. The staff is gonna fill out and it's just, you know, a a positive way for them to provide feedback on their room cleanliness, hallway, bathroom cleanliness, and then any comments, things that they identify for things that we can uh improve upon. So we've talked to Bill Choey and he's worked with his guys so that they are aware. Obviously, staying with all of our chemical safety, pest management, waste disposal, with all the standards. Don oversees uh much of that with Bill Choey. Uh we're making sure that a lot of our service contracts are updated. As you are aware, we're working with the uh the council right now on our bidding process. Um and and I'll keep you apprised as we continue. We did get a couple of numbers back for our um boiler system and one of them fell within the monies that were earmarked, so that looks really positive. Uh and it was for a boiler that we were hoping to be able to purchase, so we're moving forward. Just hopefully we push the cold weather down long enough and keep our one boiler running and we don't have to worry about it. Um indoor air quality, we have tools for schools. There's a handout with a schedule. Uh I know the high school went through their walkthrough today. Tools for schools and um middle schools. So all schools are often doing, uh often running. They have their activities set up. Uh obviously with the air quality, the climate control and and then getting feedback through their walkthroughs to make sure that, you know, the environment is conducive for for everyone in the buildings. Obviously, the high school, you know, we kicked the heat on on November first. It was a cold day. We've always had problems on the first day when we fire up the heating systems. We have over four hundred thousand square feet of of classroom space in our school. So uh John Floyd does an amazing job getting out into the buildings. He's a licensed plumber, but it's a it's a tall task for one man. We do service contract out, but um John knows our systems better than anyone, so um everything's up and running right now. We're still gonna continue with the district technology plan. It's no longer required by the state. Um but we have a a goal to continue with that, making sure that we have a plan in place so that we replace old outdated equipment with new, you know, the clock panel initiative and what we did with iPads. Many of our students now uh have their own technology on the stuff they take home with them, so we've had great success with that. Hmm, I believe, that's just a real quick overview. So I encourage you to take time to just go through them. If you have any questions, forward them to me. Any questions specifically about anything with the facilities, um and then we'll get those back.
Right, thank you very much.
Okay? And that's it.
I thought it was important that our board members have a chance to see the goals that Superintendent Moore was working on. I appreciate Scott.
Can I ask a question? Just since this is my first time seeing something like this in this venue. Does Scott develop his own goals based on the strategic plan or does he have guidance from the board or from the community? Like, how do you formulate your goals? Like, how do you formulate your goals?
Sarah, you want to walk through what we did?
Yeah, basically during, during the time that we evaluate the superintendent, we as a board brainstorm and talk to him and together target areas that we want to work on as a board and superintendent. And we did this back in, I believe it was August.
Yes.
When we evaluated and found he meeting all of his expectations. And those are the goals that will follow us all year. So, in January, February, the superintendent and the board will meet probably in executive session to discuss progress on the goals. Or he may choose to do something like this, this was wonderful, and that way the people at home know what they're doing. And then in June, because we're going to follow the timeline, then, you know, the last few years, we've really been off the timeline, but we're going to follow the timeline. And then in June, those are the areas that the board uses for evaluating the superintendent.
And is there a clear metric, so along the way Scott and the board can know if he's successful or if there's areas that are not successful? Like, are there, is there a way to see excellent job, average, like, how do we gauge it? So, it's not opinion only, but it's, it's based on statistics and data.
Yeah, some of it, some of it is, he's using the strategic school profile basically to align his goals. In some places superintendent's write goals that have measurable, you know, objectives. This is a big change from what we used to do, we used, we used to, and Marcy could speak better to that because she, she was chair, I think, at the time, they were using checklists and things that really didn't get to the heart.
A CAE, a CAE evaluation form that was started previously by previous board chairs, and we just kind of followed through with it. But it was really, it wasn't really conducive to what we needed to do, there were a lot of things that we really couldn't answer as a board and, you know.
Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, so it wasn't just a random violation.
Yeah.
No, sorry, sorry.
It's what they had recommended that you use.
Right.
But in the dare, now in the era of data-driven decision-making and accountability and measurable goals, we realized, when I came on the board, I had made the suggestion that maybe we need to have goals that we all worked towards and that are printed and documented, and so that's the evolution of it. Right, and then Coley, who's sitting back there, took it one step further and really said, you know, I really think we need to focus more on these school-targeted goals rather than the CAE, which is more generic.
Right.
It just made more sense, because this way, the, the parents know what the goals for the district are, the teachers, the administrators know what the goals are, we know, Scott know, everyone, and we're moving in the same direction as opposed to the CAE list, which we sort of looked at the attributes, but was more general in, in a, in a sense.
It was more general, yes, definitely more general.
So, I've never seen a superintendent goal plan, admittedly, but I have seen many, many evaluation plans. And my biggest concern is that if we are trying to be fair in all of our decisions, we should not have anything that can be swayed. And so, I'd like that we have hard goals and soft goals so that we can have clearly measurable goals that we can present to all of these parents and to us and to you, so it's very, very clear if you are meeting your targets or if you're not. And then there's other things that are going to be softer because they're based on school feeling or, you know, whatever it is. But I, I just think it protects you, and I think it protects the board, and I think it gives a clear indication to our community of where we're at. So, when we do go up for contracts or anything else, we have clear data. And, and that's how I evaluate my employees, and I think it's, I think it's a pretty fair way to go.
Sure.
We can, we can talk. We did do that, that's what I was talking to Sarah, but I know you're new, so I just want to say, but I don't want, you know, people here thinking we didn't do it, so, and the rest I think Sarah wants to talk about, and I can do that. Exactly, perfect. And exception, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you so much for putting this together because, because we have such an unusual new number of people. I thought it would be important to do this. Okay, figure out where we are on our list, or can we do, we're on committee reports. Negotiations, is there anything?
Well, we, I do need to talk to the board about the cafeteria contract.
Yep.
Okay.
And then there are other things related to other contracts that you may move into executive session.
Right. Okay, budgets and operations, Marcy, do you have a report?
Yeah, well, we met Monday night, we normally meet tonight, but we met Monday night this week. So far for this year, this current year, we're in good shape, it's early on and we haven't, you know, hit any big obstacles. The boiler bids were due today, and you said we got one in our price range, so that's really good to hear. So, I don't think we can chance that boiler too much longer. We also discussed what we as board members would like to see in the budget for the next, the 2018-2019 budget season. Um, so we had some discussion about that.
Yeah, we'll present that to the administrative team on Monday.
Right, and other than that, just some contracts that are, you know, that are still, you're still working on, the secretaries and the custodians. Custodians, yeah, they're still working on theirs, so maybe next month we'll have some more definitive answers on that one.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Curriculum instruction and strategic planning, Diane?
Oh, wait, timeout, timeout, timeout.
There was one other.
Budget calendar.
Sorry, sorry, I'll back up your.
The budget calendar.
Which again, you don't, you don't have to do at this meeting, you can do it in December if you want.
Why don't we just get it?
But you have the two, the main issue really are the two highlighted on the second page.
It's not in here.
Oh, whoops.
No, it's not in here.
You want copies or you want me to just?
If you want to just tell us, send it out to us.
We'll, we'll, hold on, send it out to us after we approve it. So, why don't we just look at our calendars, so the two February dates are what we're looking at?
And then just email.
And the other question, the other question regarding the budget workshops is we had, have historically started them at seven o'clock. There was some discussion of starting them earlier, so if we're going to change the time, then this would also be the place to do it.
We, we just need to check, maybe some of our members travel from home for work, you know.
Not yet.
You can do six? Shawna can do six, can everybody do six?
I can do six.
We don't have dates yet.
Don has the dates.
Well, the tentative dates we put down were January twenty-fifth and February eighth. But again, this is all very fluid, at this point in time, they can be changed. The only thing we would want to do is get them both in prior to the regular board meeting in February, which is the fifteenth.
Okay, well, those two dates work for me, and six o'clock works for me.
And, and there is, there is one other save the date with budgets, and we haven't been officially notified though, but I've been asked to have us reserve time on December fifth at six o'clock to meet with the council about budget issues.
What date is that?
That's December fifth at six o'clock. And I also believe that the, our state representative may be doing a workshop for us on the budget and on some of the new laws and all of that, is that correct?
When is that, December fifth?
December fifth.
Because we were asked to be at the meeting the other night, and I, I got there after my dentist appointment. I know Diane, you missed a function at your work, which was not good, and I don't really know why we were there as far as budget goes.
Well, I, I think that when they got the, the actual numbers, I think there was, there was confusion at that meeting because it sounded like there wasn't going to be a half a million dollar hit to ECS. And now I'm hearing, and I saw some numbers, that there is a hit this year, about four hundred thousand to ECS. So, I think we're actually going back to discuss some of that. Plus, the new, new budget that's passed at the state level has some very important changes for us to be aware of. About people that, you know, if the school system, I'm just paraphrasing what I've been told, so it may not be accurate, we need to hear from Vinnie. But I'm hearing that if we hire someone over a hundred thousand, it has to be sent to town hall now. I'm hearing that all contracts have to be, which I thought they had to be placed in town hall anyway, so I'm not, I know they're, they're tightening up, because of the fiscal situation, the state's tightening up the way boards, events, and towns do business, and I think it behooves us to, to find out sooner than later, so. And I can be there, if you guys can't be there, I can be there and take notes.
Well, I suppose I want to be there if I'm muted, but I even called you, right?
I sure heard you say yes.
Only because I had that lady there.
Right.
So, I guess I would say if it's not going to happen, a courtesy call would be nice.
Okay.
And it's not from you, I know it was, because I know you expected us to.
I think they did too, and then I think there was different information, and then.
That's okay, I'm just so glad.
That is six o'clock on December fifth in town hall, change.
January twenty-fifth, February.
It's before the council meeting.
Right, before the council meeting, December fifth.
And then can we go back, how about January twenty-fifth and February eighth, does that work for everybody at the other end of the table?
It works for me.
What is it? January twenty-fifth and February eighth for the two budget workshops at six o'clock.
Twenty-eight. No.
January twenty-fifth and February eighth.
Right, and Don's going to email us.
Oh, no, he usually does on the calendar.
And February eight.
Yeah, six o'clock.
I think we're okay then, can we, can we vote on it?
Sure, I'll make the motion to approve the 2018-2019 budget calendar as recommended by the subcommittee.
Can we need a second?
Second.
Shawna? Okay, Shawna seconded it. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Now, we're moving on to government and curriculum strategic planning.
Okay, this evening we had a meeting, the primary focus of our meeting was on professional development. We discussed the professional, professional development offerings for the teachers in the district on November third and fourth. It ranged from options, teacher choice, state-required testing, and some district decisions based on job-embedded department-wide offerings as well as evaluation dictated type things. So, based on their teacher evaluation, may have been recommended for them to participate in a certain type of professional development. Some of the topics included one-to-one Chromebook, Google Drive, and understanding the framework for teaching. We also talked about some of the grants and the changes that have occurred in the application grant process and the implications it has for us as a district on staffing and the different types of options we can offer our students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy, is there anything else you want to add? Thank you. Moving on to pension, we met on November eighth, two thousand seventeen. They approved the pensions of two former employees who had reached retirement age and are retired fire department person. They also reported the status of two previous pensions where people had to choose what type of option they were going to take. The highlight of the, the meeting was the presentation on the two thousand seventeen actuarial valuation, which I have available should, I forgot to bring it tonight, but I can, I can get it to Don, I can leave a copy, give it to him.
We have it.
You have it?
Yeah, we have.
All right, so you've got it.
Yeah, Anthony will send it to me.
Yeah, so there was a little concern that investments weren't making what we really liked them to make, and I, I believe that the committee is going to meet with Avery very soon to go, to go over that. And that's, that's about it. Policy, Beth?
Okay, the policy subplaning, we're trying to present the following policies for the first read. Policy P nine fifty, with provisions suggested to this policy are to ensure clarity that board chairs only authorized to act one specifically authorized by a specific board motion or by the adoption of a bylaw authorizing board chair to act, to prevent the board chair from inadvertently exceeding his or her authority, and to streamline the bylaw by eliminating duplicate provisions that, you know, in other bylaws are required. The second policy, P nine one ten, reading conduct, and the suggested provisions are for to adopt Robert's rules and order in the board's policy regarding reading conduct, and this fills any gaps in the board's bylaw statutes to enable procedures, and addresses the telephonic participation by board members.
Right, and I, I know from talking to some people before, some of the board is concerned about the telephonic participation piece, and I don't know if they want to.
Yeah, before we get to that one, the one of chair.
Okay.
I think Shawna asked at the last meeting when we're changing these policies, if we could have the previous policy with the changes, and it highlighted.
Right, with the line.
Yes, with the line.
Right.
We asked that again at the meeting.
You know, I do, I think I might have.
That we put in words with the highlight.
Like the, like the old, the old policy.
Right, we brought that up at the meeting, and I thought that was decided that I was going to run a copy of it for you.
I just don't have copies for you, but I can pass it down if you want to take a look at it. That was, and, and from now on, we'll.
Well, it's, it's a first read, so what, if it's, so maybe this could be emailed to us.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't really want to do it now, it's a first read, I don't want to spend the time on it, so if you could have that emailed, that would be helpful. And then I did tell Sarah that I have issues with phone participation for a meeting. I think if you are going to be part of a committee, a part of a board, you try to make as many meetings as possible. I think it's an easy scapegoat to do, to call in on the phone. I, I think it's important to be here in person, to have somebody missing tonight and in on the phone. They're not here to see the crowd, they're not here to see people's faces when they're speaking. There's a lot of reasons, I, I am totally not in favor of phone calls for, for, for the meeting.
And it probably would surprise some of you that I totally agree with Marcy.
And I agree with all of you.
I do too.
Yeah.
The concern would be there's some, you know, boards that don't, don't allow it, so I was surprised to hear about it. But I do think it limits control as to who you're really talking to, what's happening on the other side, and.
Yeah, our attorney, our policy attorney had recommended, so we included it in, in the packet for the first read. But, and we did modify it when we had the, the stop to go over it. We were very concerned also about executive session, because if you have an executive session, you don't know who's sitting in the living room, the other person.
Yeah, absolutely opposed to this.
Yeah.
So, I think it's safe to say that you want to rewrite.
We want to remove all the touches, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I agree, not a good idea.
Yeah, I would say we already agreed, we're very good on it.
And then my other concern with that one is the three-minute speaking time. It's, it's, it's just my thought, it is very rare to have this many people here. I can count on one hand in twelve years that I've been on the board, this many people here. I don't really think that we should have a time limit. I think if there's something like this coming up, and we know there's going to be a lot of people, the board chair at the beginning of the meeting can say, there's a big crowd here, you know, in order to keep the meeting timely, you know, we're going to set a limit of three minutes. But I think on a regular basis, when we're lucky, if we have three guests here.
I know, we're hoping you all come back.
But I'm, I'm, I'm just saying when we have three guests here, to limit people to two or three minutes. I mean, you know, you see a crowd like this, you let them speak, they were all very respectful, they adhered to the time. I mean, if there's twenty more people in line and you want to say, does everybody else echo the same thoughts so they can be heard? But I, I'm not really in favor of a, of a time limit, to be honest with you. I, I think the chairperson would have the right to limit it at a meeting if, if she, he or she felt the need to.
I disagree. I'm going to say though that, sorry.
That's all right.
Most boards do have a time limit, I've said, I'm not saying we can't change things, but, you know, and I want to hear everybody's opinion by all means, but I do know from my experience visiting board of education meetings and everything, most do have.
That's okay, I'm just stating my opinion.
I think it's more dangerous when we change the rules sometimes for others, that's, you know what I mean? I think that's more dangerous, so I think what we have to do is come up with something and, and decide whether, maybe it's five minutes, I don't know. But I'm just saying, well, I, I was discussing Shawna.
If, if I'm outnumbered, it's already decided. I think two people can say what they need to say within three minutes. If you can't say it within two to three minutes, you're rambling.
Two people can say what they need to say within three minutes. If you can't say it within two to three minutes, you're rambling.
Like, let's just, yeah, good points.
If that's what you guys will agree to, fine, you let her in.
Yeah, we, I really think, I mean, they were limited to two minutes, and we tried to let people complete their thoughts, but complete their thoughts quickly. And the substance and content was very clear. And I don't think any of us have any doubt about how any one of those people that spoke felt. But, and I do think that by adding three minutes, it's giving them a little more wiggle room, which, you know, because it's, it can be nerve-wracking when you're speaking at a public forum, especially if you're not used to it. So.
I'll give them this one. If everybody else is in favor of the three, I'll support it. No, I know, I know, but just to change it so it's ready to be, you know.
What do we, what do we think, Beth? What do you think?
I'm very good.
Three minutes? I tend to think three minutes too.
Okay.
And that's, and we did let people, one thing I don't know about is we did let people know that we repeat two-minute people. And that works. And I'm delighted that people are here to talk, and we do want to hear what they have to say. So, Shauna?
Yeah, I like the three minutes. That's fine.
All right, so telephonic is out, which makes us happy. And three minutes is in.
Okay. One of the things that I mentioned last meeting, and I don't see it on here or that it was addressed, is that I have a very hard time, well, tonight was a very different meeting. The last two meetings I've sat in, parents have come up with an issue that they couldn't negotiate on their own, and we sit completely silent, and I have a very hard time doing that when we're servants of the public. I don't think we should address people during that venue, because it can turn into a big Pandora's box that think there should be a way we can direct them. Not that we give them an answer or a verdict, or, but we need to give them the vehicle to go to to get their system, their problem resolved. And it needs to be systematic, so that everyone is the same, whether it's the board chair, the, you know, a member. But someone gets their name, follows up with them, and gives them a uniform type of email that we're all copied on, so that it's very clear and that they can have direction.
We did have a link on our site before, years ago, as part of the communications committee. We had two board members assigned to it, so that the community had the opportunity to go in, go on this link, and then share concerns, so it would go to the board, and then the board would then redirect it to us.
Would it be better though, Scott, to have you respond and copy us? Because you may know better what direction the person needs to go in.
Whatever means of communication, but the community had the ability to hit this link and.
Sometimes I don't even think they know. Like, I wouldn't know to hit the link unless you just told me. But someone who is pouring out their heart and is visibly upset, I'm a social worker, I have education, it kills me. I can't not help someone who I see is in need. So, you know, lead the horse to water, so to speak. Like, if we just say, hey, there's a link, if you just hit that link, someone's going to give you.
Or can I make a recommendation? If somebody comes here with a concern, Scott, can you follow up with them? You know, within twenty-four hours, even if you say, and then copy all of us, then we know. I think if they email us, which I want to know.
Many, many times, it has been heard.
I'm going to just send it to you, because I know your role and I know, you know, what you need to do.
That's a good suggestion, yeah.
So, if you could just.
The one thing that a lot of times you're not aware of is the numerous communications that have occurred with that person.
Right, exactly.
Right, exactly. So I might be redundant, yeah, for us.
Different levels, and then if it's something that was not in agreement with the person that is sending it, they're.
Right, exactly.
So I know we've had issues where we all sat silent, and sometimes I wish you said, I responded to you six times.
No, but I try to keep everything confidential.
But what you can do is when you respond to that person, you know, I've responded to you, here's the attached correspondence, and that will give us a clue as to what's going on, because we're going to see the date of that communication.
Which I usually send to them next time.
Right, right.
I just wanted to put it out there, because I know, like, it's tough.
And if it's a new issue, just follow up, so that we, like, you know, right?
Right, now we can be spinning wheels coming month after month trying to get some.
I would resolve.
Okay, so second read next month without the telephonic, but with the three minutes in. And we will, I can actually probably get these copied for you. There was the one.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, we can do that when we're in executive session, so you can read here.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, then Aces' pension, pension about policy. Aces. Okay, we had an Aces' meeting last week, on the fourteenth. I provided Mr. Arum with a copy of the new fees for the special ed schools and also for the services that are offered by Aces for next year. And he's only given to Don for our budgeting. And that's a big change for Aces, because they used to come up with their charges in like, March or April, and we already had our budgets done. So we've been working with them to have them do it more promptly. So we know ahead of time. They passed the bond resolution for Leader Hill project, and they took out all of the accountability they were trying to put on the towns, because originally they were trying to make the towns have to pay for it if they defaulted. So all that is fixed, and it did pass. They reduced their total deficit. You know, you may recall, they started the year with one point four in the red, and they now only owe forty-four thousand in the red, so that's very good news. The groundbreaking for the Leader Hill project will be held on December fourteenth. And my question to Don and Scott is can we invite Aces to come speak to the board about their health insurance collaborative, or is that not something?
We have done that. We've, I've met with Tom, and I think Tom has met with Anthony Don, or?
Well, they haven't spoken to the board.
No, they haven't spoken to the board. Oh, you're saying to the board, yeah. Okay, I'm pressing with us.
Well, because I know you're in conversation, so if we were going to go in that direction, I thought maybe we should invite them so the board could be informed.
How many districts do you know are working with them? Is it a couple right now?
They only have two for this year, but for next year, the list is growing. And they actually have school districts from outside of the Aces' area requesting.
So self-insured, do you know?
Right, you have to be self-insured. In many cases, both the town and the school board are self-insured. They know both are participating, so.
So they go up to town.
Well, they're all self-insured.
Yeah, the town or the brand are pretty self-insured.
I think it primarily focuses on stop loss and administrative fees, so it doesn't matter as much what your specific plan is.
Right, gotcha.
But yeah, we've actually, Anthony and I did meet with the, I forget who Sonia's company is, but the consultant that they were using.
Was it in a head all, anything you'd want to pursue?
It could be. One of the things we found out at that time is the horse was already out of the barn for this year. So we didn't pursue it any farther at that time, but we certainly could. And, you know, if you'd like us to do it first, or we can have them come to, to present to the board, whatever you prefer.
Yeah, whichever. I mean, it's really up to you guys, because if it's not something you think you'd be wanting to go in the direction of, but I wouldn't want to spend more time on it. But if it is something you think you might want to go in the direction of, I think it behooves us to.
Well, I can contact Sonia again and just, you know, get an update on where they are and perhaps get some more specifics.
Can you send at least to me a little more information about it? Because I don't feel like I totally know enough to even have an opinion as to whether I think it's something.
Well, that's what I'll do. I'll get an update from her and then.
And then it's perfect. Yeah, all I know is that they're telling me that people are saving money, but I don't know that for a fact.
Yeah, yeah, and it sounds, it's hard for me to wrap my friend around.
Okay. And moving on to building committee? Was there a building committee?
In the future, you'll be asking that. I know, I checked. I don't, Don's saying to that, I said, building, you can stay on it.
And that will be great. It was not my thing. I'm sorry, the first one I need here for the next.
Okay, and then under communication, was there any communication? All right, then, now I need some guidance here, because I'm new to this, and I see that we have the motion to adjourn here, but I also know that we typically do good of the board and visitors and press before we go into executive session. So how does that usually happen? By agenda?
No, we usually do it.
We usually just do it.
Let me just do it. All right, then we'll just do it. So we'll move to good of the board.
Yes, I would just like to say that I've been to a couple of programs, Action, Jerome, very nice programs. Vet program, I was very happy for that, I moved from my vet. And I spoke with Beth about the sound system. You could, the kids did a marvelous job, but you couldn't hear it. And Beth said they're trying to work on it, but.
They were there today.
Were they?
Yes.
Is it better?
It's not bad. So they worked it together.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, May, Beth is the next one?
Yes.
Okay. And the other thing, I said it before, and I, I again would like to, with everything that's going on and the information and everything, I again would like to put out there to have a complete forensic audit, because I feel like I need information. I put that out there.
And I would just. We can't hear you, Beth, you're, I'm sorry.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear.
I, you heard me about Jerome?
Yes.
All right. The other thing that I put out once before, a couple times before I've talked, I would still like, for my own information, to get more background and to have a complete forensic audit on the board, so we can clear up a lot of things that are just out there.
Okay, and.
I'm going to, can I jump in?
Sure.
Oh, I think you're wrapping things up, and I wanted to.
No, 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 I actually, I had something for good of the board too. You go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for thinking of me and my family. We recently had a death in the family, so thank you, and thank you for all that reached out to me.
Very well.
Anything else for good of the board?
I do, I have two things. First of all, thank you, Sarah, for keeping me on negotiations and budget. I've been on those for twelve years. You know, you said that, you said you would keep me on there even though you were told to remove me from those. I would like to know who told you to remove me from those. And the other issue is, I just had a quick question, Scott. I got a couple of text messages that we canceled pickleball. I mean, okay, if we had too many people, we could have gone to Totucket Valley. Who went ahead and told Park and Rec that they had to cancel pickleball tonight? So in case we needed the cafeteria. Well, yes, because they.
They said that was canceled.
There was a sign on the door saying it was canceled, and Lou came and said, I hope you don't mind. I told them they could play, but if we need the room, they're going, if it's too much in here and we need to move in there, that they're going to have to cancel their game. And why would we just call Park and Rec and?
It was going to move to Totucket.
Right.
For overflow, and then we received a call that we would be able to use this facility instead of moving over to Totucket if we had greater than a PD five capacity.
And it's mine, I think I started the ball rolling this morning, because I had so many Facebook screenshots sent to me that I thought we were going to have hundreds of people. We have a good crowd, but I contacted Don and Scott later this morning, and I said, you know, I'm assuming that we may have an overflow crowd. There's nothing that makes people angrier than going out on a rainy night or whatever to a meeting and having the meeting canceled, because a fire marshal comes and shuts it down. So I wanted to make certain that we had a couple of things, a microphone, so that people can be heard on television. I wanted to make certain we had a venue that we would fit in. And originally, we were going to Totucket Valley, then the superintendent let me know that we couldn't use ceiling tape. So I was, you know, happy with that, because it's a lot easier to go next door, the hallway, than to go.
Totucket, spoke with Don. Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
All right, anything else for the board? I have one thing, but I'm waiting. All right, I know I'll sound like a broken record. And I am very pleased that we're working towards implementing the new policy ninety fifty, which will clarify the roles and responsibilities of the chair, so that the chair does not exceed his or her power. However, I really would like our board attorney to put in writing for me the answer to a question I've been asking since August twenty-fourth, which is a simple question, and is, how is the will of the board determined? Because when I look at the investigation going on now for our financial issues, inconsistencies, whatever they are, and I look at the trouble this board has been through in the last few months, and I look at the board chairs in the past, for the last decade, both Democrats and Republicans, who in good faith followed our attorney's advice to keep us out of trouble. I am certain that the lawyer can simply put in writing how he determines the will of the board, because that's what our people were relying on when they made decisions and when they entered into signing things as chair. And I realize, you know, that when I first asked, I wasn't the chair, so I wasn't privileged to that information. And when he did answer and respond to our former chair, she was kind enough to share it with me in October, there still wasn't an answer to how the will of the board is determined. So if we could just get that simple question answered in writing before the December meeting, I think it would help us to put to bed the last decade of, you know, what our chairs did.
Claire, do you want Ann Littlefield? It was her policy.
Well, Bill Condon was the one that has been guiding their decisions. And I'm saying our chairs, whether they were Democrats or they were Republicans, to the best of their ability, follow legal advice. And I think.
So not Schiffman's policy?
No, I don't want Ann's, because Ann wasn't the one guiding our chairs. When our chairs asked for help, or when we wondered why or how Phil could sign a document and modify a contract without a board vote.
So you're not looking to move forward? Do you want to know what they have in the past?
I want to protect, I want to do both. I want to protect our past chairs, because we're being investigators, and this will protect us. Our people did what they were told to do by our attorney. And I am confident that he can simply explain his thinking. So we have something to hang our hat on. And I think it protects, I'm looking to be both, to both move forward, but also to protect the integrity of this board, our past chairs, because I do not believe any of them intentionally did anything wrong. And I think they followed the legal advice. And I think that the person that gave the legal advice can simply explain what he was basing this on. How did he determine the will of the board? Because that really is a, and I'm taking a big mess and making it very simple, but if we know that, we then know what he was basing his decisions on. Because our people, and I wasn't here then, but some people were, and they were counting on that, and they were trusting that, and they were acting on that. And right now, we have, we're in a situation where some of us, you know, we've lost credibility because of it, and some of us are grappling with how could this have happened? And I think if we could get a simple answer to how the will of the board was determined, it will clear up much of this mess, and at least it will give us a piece of paper that we can hang our hat on and say, you know what, our board chairs were all following legal advice, because I know they were.
But we were following legal advice. Whether we have the explanation of what the will of the board is or not, his legal advice was, it's okay. Right, right, so regardless of whether we have it spelled out or not, I don't know that that changes anything.
Well, it made me feel a lot comfortable.
Okay, well, then that's, then that's the answer, but I don't really think it's going to change much, because, you know.
Like, if it's about you and going forward, maybe because you prefer to work with the policy person, it would make sense to ask them, you know, that you're.
Yeah, I don't know if she's going to give us the same answer. I think we need to know what the board is trying.
All right, it's clear, it's clear what we're looking for.
Yeah, I want to know what is, what he was thinking.
Scott, just, can we, if we're all agreed, I'm sure we are.
Can we just do that? Do we need to vote on that to get a, get an answer to that question? Or can we just get an answer to that?
I mean, he mailed a response back, but you want more clarification on the word will?
I repeat, that response, it doesn't, it does not address at all that.
So you want more on the word will?
Yeah, I can give you that response. It had nothing to do with my questions.
I can make a contact.
Yeah, I can.
And request it.
I mean, I don't want to. Hang on a minute. Hang on a minute. I mean, I'll see what you want to write down. But anyway, I have the response. Colby was kind enough to forward it to me on October 12th. And it doesn't address, it simply, it says that his, basically to paraphrase it and I don't have it here, but basically it says, A, you know, Sarah Queerfeld asks a lot of questions and she authorized to get the answer, she's not the board chair. Here's my answer, if she is, you know, able to see the answer. And then he goes into how his response is only as good as what he is told, but he never ever directly answers how the will of the board was determined. Because I've been arguing since August that the will of the board is determined by a vote or by something very concrete. And I guess, you know, Marcia's called me a nerd and I guess in a way I am, but I just, I need to know what the attorney was thinking when he was giving our people who trust him this advice because it's caused us a lot of hardship.
But my question is, as board chair, you have the ability to directly email in your question. Because as board chair, his response was that I deal directly with the board chair. You now, now I can do it for you, but I think...
Well, he won't answer it again, though, probably, because he didn't last long.
Sarah, is it possible that you can email him and you copy all of us and say, "All you're looking for is the will of the board is determined by parentheses, concrete answer"?
I can, I can let him know that...
And if you give me his email address, I will copy all of my colleagues and we will ask him and we'll see if he can't get that, put it behind us and move on.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe even an example, so he can be very targeted.
Yeah, because I just feel that right now, I know, because I know people, I know they did what they were coached to do by the lawyer and told to do by the lawyer. I have no doubt about that. And I just don't have the answer. So I'd like to get the answer so we can put this behind us and move forward. So thank you, that's what we will do, get the email address from you tomorrow.
Right, now for, let him know, expect an email from you.
Yeah, let them know on board chair now too.
Yeah, well, that's, and that's, I think that's important information that...
Please have it, because I really want it behind us. I think it's behind us four times now.
But he's not going to respond to any other board members except the chair.
He shouldn't, he shouldn't.
Ask for you as senior chair.
Right, no, but like I said, Scott did, you know, I thought, Scott said to me, "Give me your questions, I'll send them to him." So I thought if the superintendent was sending them to him, he might answer them, but he's still...
Well, he's set to respond.
So anyway, thank you, I'd like to move on with it too. We have one more visitors and press and, you know, again, if you're going to speak, please state your name, your address for the record and you remind me of our two-minute rule at this point.
It's Bill Savisteno and I just want to finish up on the vets thing. I just wanted to ask Scott that next year, I know you're going to be here.
I had a bus hearing that morning and it was absolutely... Told you this and I couldn't be with you, sir. Believe me, there's no place I'd rather be than with you and, but I want to know and I couldn't get out of it.
No, what I was going to say was, there's a lot of vets in that room that doesn't know that other activities go on on Veterans Day.
Oh, at the other side.
So the message, so if you say a few words in the message, you'll get out.
Absolutely.
And suggesting...
And I said, there's no place I'd rather be than with my vets, not my, all of our vets on that day.
Thank you.
Over a bus man yet. Do you get my point?
A reference to the three-minute rule there. You have a sign-up sheet that comes around, put a thing in there, people want to speak, sign up. So you know, before the meeting starts, you've got 20 people and then you can set the rule at night if need be. You've got three people, let them go. Monday I was here and this is going back to transparency. Monday, I got a little nosy body and I went to the library looking for the town council agenda and I asked about the one for this meeting and there is none. So I'm saying, there probably ought to be something in the library so people don't have to run to the office, which is what I did and they were very nice. They didn't give me too much of what I wanted, but they were, they offered something. But there should be something in the library, let's talk. Transparency, that's what it's all about. And the last thing, a reference to something that come up in June. I guess a motion was made on the transportation contract and you all passed that, that Don and Scott should talk to the GATCO people about a new five-year contract, not to exceed 3.9. We were in the midst of a crisis here in town with our own budget and you, I hope it wasn't really thought out to me, you were going to be talking about a five-year contract that would have given this bus company, and that thing is a bus company, or children on the buses. But you were really pushing that thing out there for, we didn't have our own budget that was settled, but the people were concerned with an extra tax bill. So I think that was very ill-advised, I don't know. I've never heard anything since. Hopefully it can come up on the agenda maybe next time. Again, it's all about transparency.
The board talks on all those contracts and extensions, they discuss it and they're all aware of all of it.
Yeah, but we're not.
You're, well, you're more than welcome to come in and look at them, the contract, absolutely. If you want to come in and look at a bus contract, I'll sit down gladly, chair.
It's not, not the contract, I'm talking about the cost.
Oh, well, we can go through the cost and give you all the analysis that goes into it.
I can understand that, but there's people out here that don't take a pay raise for years and meanwhile, we've got to give a bus company a guaranteed thing over five years? I mean, I would have given them one year and said, "Listen, pal," I'll try to be frank here, "Come back next year and we really got to sit down." I'll give you the 3.9 this year and next year, things are rough. So you gave them one year. To go out fighting, I don't even know if that's what it ended up to be, so. But as a person sitting here, just seeing it on a video, you can understand hopefully where I'm coming from because it was pretty blatant.
I'll extend that invitation anytime that you want to come in and sit and ask those questions and we would gladly go through with it.
Well, there's no questions for me to ask except to keep it close to the bone. Why did you want to...
We're breaking, sorry, we're breaking the rules because the rules are we can't respond.
I thought we did three minutes, okay.
Well, yeah, yeah, we haven't changed it to three minutes yet, but thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Elizabeth Kaplan, Middletown Avenue, Norfolk. First, I want to thank you for your volunteerism. I have also sat where you sat and it takes a lot of time, a lot of sacrifice away from family and just to be prepared, it really is a, it's a huge learning curve. So I appreciate everything that you folks give to our community. But I wanted to speak on behalf of the arts, the visual arts. You know, I had a very good working relationship with Bob Wolf and he was very supportive of the arts as well and we're periphery. But it has never felt like that in our community. The visual arts, the music theater is very, very well supported from the top down and I can't thank you enough, Scott. You come to our events, you support our students, you come in, you, Scott comes into my class and it's like they all get excited, you know, because he asks them what they do. And in all honesty, Bob Wolf, God rest his soul, when he used to walk in a building, people used to scatter, you know, I mean, and I never felt that way, but you know, he could be intimidating sometimes. And I watch Scott with kids and I watch how he interacts with all different types of kids and he genuinely cares and he's genuinely interested and we really have a community. We not only have a vibrant school community, K to 12, but we have a vibrant community in North Branford and the schools are a huge part of that and Scott's a huge part of that and our administrators are a part of that and our teachers are part of that and certainly our parents and our students. And again, I urge you to extend his contract and I also feel that changing the scope of having a one-year renewal would not be wise in any shape or form because it really, I think about our town manager and I think it's very hard for someone like him to do his job when he's an at-will, essentially an at-will employee. And I think it's hard to sink your teeth into something when you don't have the confidence of the people around you. So three years is standard from what I understand and I think it's a good way to stay. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Any other visitors' comments? Hearing no other visitors' comments, I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per section 1225 of the Connecticut General Statutes as permitted by section 1-200, 6A and E of the Connecticut General Statutes to discuss item 7C, leave, well, no, we've taken that out, no leave request. Item 9, Negotiations, Director of Technology, Director of Personnel and Business, the Superintendent of Schools, Local 1303-32 of Connecticut Council for asking me cafeteria workers contracted unaffiliated personnel salary agreements.
We need, we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. I will adjourn to executive session.
Why don't you say roll call, I'll know, much longer? Much longer? Six minutes? I have a comment.
All right, let the record show that we have come out of the executive session, called the meeting to order, starting with a motion to extend the contract of the Director of Technology, Lewis Williams, for one year through June 30th, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Sean has seconded it. Before, under discussion, I would like to state that some of the board members, superintendent, myself, met with board attorney on both this contract and the Director of Personnel and Business contract and we were encouraged to move from three-year contracts to one-year contracts or at-will. So I just wanted to make that clear. Any other discussion?
In researching this with the attorney, it was, these were at-will positions up until the year 2003 and in 2003, the then-board chair and superintendent changed these to three-year rolling contracts, which is typically just for superintendents, not for these other positions. So we're operating under his advice on those two, has nothing to do.
We want to make it clear, it's not a reflection on people's work ethic or, you know, it's, but it is a recommendation from our attorney.
The same attorney does not give you the answer you want?
Brandy, you are out of order right now. Is there any further discussion? Not hearing any, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Chairman Queerfeld?
No.
Vice Chair Papa Holter?
No.
Secretary Siena?
No.
Carolyn Candelora?
No.
Marcy Nafrio?
No.
Diane Vumbek?
No.
And moving on, motion to extend the contract of the Director of Personnel and Business, Donald Lemicki, for one year through June 30th, 2020. Is there a second? Beth seconded it, any discussion? Hearing none, a call for roll call vote.
Chairman Queerfeld?
No.
Vice Chair Papa Holter?
No.
Secretary Siena?
No.
Carolyn Candelora?
No.
Marcy Nafrio?
No.
Diane Vumbek?
No.
Motion to extend the contract of Superintendent of Schools, Scott Schoolmaker, for one year through June 30th, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. I will, I will start discussion. I will say that although I've heard everything people have said here about how wonderful our superintendent is, how wonderfully he is with people, I've observed that myself. Given the fact that this board and this board's chief executive officer are under investigation at this time by the town council and it's headed to the state's attorney's office, I do not feel it would be responsible to extend the contract, especially given as he has a contract through June of 2019 and we will reconvene in June of 2018 to address this again.
I would like to also bring some issues to the table. Based on the evaluation that was given to Scott in August, I cannot in good conscience vote with some others that have such strong feelings, one, because I was not on the board at that time, and two, I'm just not as knowledgeable on some of those issues. However, I have suggested that we separate the vote into, one, opening the contract and two, renewing the contract. I will say I do have issues with the contract as written and I would like to delve a little bit deeper into it so I can make a better educated decision and so that's, you know, what we discussed.
I just want to say that I disagree with your concerns. My issues are, you know, many of us may have questions. I know when I have questions, I seek answers and I got them and sometimes they were what I wanted to hear and sometimes they weren't, but I'm not harboring any ill will and I can't blame anybody other than myself if I had these questions and didn't search for the answers. So I did that. With that said, I think, Scott, that you do a great job. I am going to support this. Sarah, yourself, you had told me, and I think you'll be honest about this, that you are convinced that this investigation is going to go nowhere and you told me that, so why would you say it's the investigation that would stop you from supporting our superintendent?
Because I have many unanswered questions. I have many unanswered questions.
But why didn't you ask them, Sarah?
Because it's part of an investigation? I'm... I need to... The audience needs to maintain decorum, thank you.
First of all...
I have, wait a minute, I'm still addressing that.
Sorry.
There are unanswered questions as to where some of the things in his contract have come from. There are unanswered questions about how board chairs were authorized to sign things and give things. There are unanswered questions as to why some board chairs have signed parts of it but what was actually given is more. I just have too many unanswered questions.
Well, it was your job to get the answer so that you could participate in the vote.
You say there's unanswered questions. We have, I went above and beyond to help with two council members to put to rest the bullshit that the town council...
bullshit that the town council has been saying, okay? And even when they get the answers in black and white, it's not enough for them, we're going to send it to the state's attorneys. Send it, they said it two months ago, they haven't done it. Why? Because they know it's going to go nowhere. To play these games is ridiculous. You talk about unanswered questions. Lynn Riordan was ridiculed for putting a letter that Scott Schoolmaker sent out to the staff on Facebook at two eleven in the afternoon. Did she or did she not contact you and ask you for permission to put that on Facebook?
I, I was contacted.
It wasn't the letter, it was, it was her notifying people at two eleven that our principal at the middle school had passed away.
That's because my daughter got off the bus.
She, she had permission.
My daughter got off the bus crying.
She had permission from the superintendent to do that. You talk about past board chairs doing things, you just said in a meeting that they were operating under the advice of the attorney, so they're supposed to question the attorney's advice. This man asked a question, or asked if something could be changed, it was granted, he didn't go do it without anybody knowing, he didn't sign anybody's name to it. I, I, I think you're, you're reaching for straws here.
Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call vote, please. Can you reread the motion?
Read the motion.
I'll reread the motion.
Thank you.
The motion was to extend the contract of superintendent of schools, Scott Schoolmaker, for one year through June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Chairman Queerfeld?
No.
Vice Chair Papa Holter?
Yes.
Secretary Siena?
No.
Carolyn Candelora?
No.
Marcy Nafrio?
Yes.
Diane Bumbek?
Yes. Do I have a tongue?
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Sean.
Excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to open Scott's contract.
Wait a minute, I, I think we need to look at the filings and see what happens with the tie, because I believe the motion fails or doesn't pass.
Tie is a no vote.
I, I think it, there's, it's a no vote.
We'll hold it.
That's exactly what it means.
What it means?
It means it's not renewed, no matter what you want to say, it means it's not-
It is not renewed, it's an extended-
You're sending him a message.
It is, it is not extended until twenty twenty. He has a contract until two thousand, June of two thousand nineteen, and we reconvene to meet on this again in June.
So in June, if you decide again not to renew it, you're giving this man less than a year.
Well, she's not deciding, right?
No, I have my vote.
Well, no, no, your strings are being pulled.
No, I'm not being told.
We have to respect the process.
Okay. Shawna, did you have something else?
No, I'll hold that motion.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. You need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?